Honored and privileged by some of our partners and so many esteemed members of our beloved community at WJCI's first virtual town hall. It's hard to believe that the WJCI colleague and I were sitting across from each other at a cafe in Scarsdale just a few months ago, wondering what more we could do to assist the thousands of Afghan individuals and families on army bases all over the country. We felt a very compelling need to help, and soon after that, our community's beautiful response to our Fort Dix collection, filling seven trucks full of needed items to keep our new American arrivals warm this winter, was very telling. Because as Jews, we are commanded to remember that we were all once refugees, and we are the children and grandchildren of refugees. We hold a special place in our hearts for those who have to leave every, who have had to leave everything behind with nothing but a backpack and no shoes on their feet in order to secure a safer, better future. At WJCI, our shared values and history are part of what drives our motivation to help immigrants from all over the world, and we did not want to just sit idle during a refugee crisis of such epic proportion. So we got to work. And a few months later, we are here to call on all of you to join our mission to get fifteen to twenty African families off army bases and into warm homes. The good news is that not only are all of us at WJCI here to help you help refugees in both big and small ways, but we also have four key partners here tonight to help guide you through the process of refugee resettlement. They are HIAS, UJA Federation of New York, the Shapiro Foundation, and IRIS. I want to thank all of them profusely for being here tonight. We are so proud of our collaboration. You'll meet them in a minute, and they're going to tell you how we're going to mobilize our community to resettle refugees together. Before we get started, I just want to give you a few house rules, housekeeping rules, to keep the programming running smoothly. Please note that this session is being recorded, and we posted to our website for future reference. Also, please make yourself, sorry, as a reminder, turning off your video sometimes improves, improves your video quality should you encounter any tech glitches. The partner presentations will be brief to give ample time, but Q and A will be long enough for you to answer all your questions. Please send your questions to, in the chat box, to Marty Michael. She will be manning the chat box later when we get to the Q and A section of our program, and she will pass the questions on to the appropriate speakers for response. And you will not be able to ask questions directly to each other so we can get as many, as much time in as we can. You will first hear from our two funders and then from our two resettlement partners. Allow me to welcome Tali Strom from UJA Federation, New York. Tali, the mic is yours.
Thanks, Holly. As Holly mentioned, I am Tali Strom. I'm a community mobilizer in Westchester at UJA Federation of New York, and I'm honestly honored to be here tonight to join this call. At UJA, our mission has always been focused on the importance of supporting those in need and assisting and empowering those in our communities who need our support. Therefore, as thousands of Afghans were evacuated from Afghanistan in August and refugees arrived in the US, UJA quickly understood the critical situation and the need to help. This past fall, as Holly mentioned, we really partnered with WJCI. Furthermore, UJA allocated about $130,000 to two organizations. One of them is with us tonight, HIAS. That grant was specifically to provide mental health services through its affiliates in US cities where large numbers of Afghans were, will ultimately be resettled. And the second grantee is an organization called Women of Afghan Women. Some of you may know it, a community-based organization in Queens dedicated to providing Afghan women and girls with essential services, including case management, employment training, and mental health. At the same time, we wanted to roll up our sleeves and do something, so we turned to Holly, honestly, and the wonderful folks at WJCI. In addition to them and our two JCC partners, AFIA and Upwardly Global, we came together with many of you and collected over 10,000 items, as Holly mentioned, seven truckloads of essential supplies that were requested by the Fort Dix Army Base in nearby New Jersey, where thousands of Afghan refugees reside today. Given our success, we are mobilizing a similar drive in Long Island at this time. That drive is set to close at the end of Monday with trucks going down to deliver much-needed items to the base again. Now, as we begin 2022, we recognize there's a really serious job before all of us. The number of refugees needing to be resettled is significant, and I think we can all agree on this call, everyone in our community is needed to help welcome and support newly arriving refugees. Last month, UJA approved a grant of $55,000 to WJCI to specifically support Afghan resettlement in and around Westchester County. We're grateful to the Shapiro Foundation, who is also on this call tonight, who has matched those dollars, and together, we're able to provide a total of $110,000 to WJCI to support resettlement efforts. At this time, UJA is also looking beyond Westchester and exploring ways we can help with resettlement in other areas of New York as well. And I'm looking forward to tonight's call and all the great work we're going to be doing together in Westchester to welcome these new families and individuals into our wonderful community. And so now, it's my pleasure to turn this over to Larry Tobin from the Shapiro Foundation.
Thanks so much, Tali. It is, it's awesome to be with you guys. I would say just two quick things before I kind of go in. Whether fairly or not, all eyes are always on New York, and in this world, all eyes are always on UJA, and to see the most, the largest, the most impactful, the most pivotal federation stepping up in such a meaningful way from grassroots, kind of bottom up and top down, is critically important. And I think it deserves huge underscoring, what Tali said, that she leaned on WJCI, she leaned on extraordinary volunteers in Holly and Marty and Ruth and Laura and the whole gang who are giving so much of your time and making this up on the fly, right? None of us, with the exception of Chris and Dodd and HIAS, I suppose, are experts in this world, and even those who do this day in and day out professionally are learning new things every day. We're Boston-based, I work for amazing people, Ed and Barbara Shapiro, who I think, like myself and like probably almost all of you on this call, come because we know where we come from, we know what our text tradition teaches us, and I suspect many of you have the same fears about our future in this country, one, two, three generations from now, as I do. Nine days ago, I had the opportunity to bring a young man, a nearly 23-year-old young man, MJ, to Boston to reunify with his mother, who he hadn't seen in five years. She's a widow, they're each other's only family. Through a crazy story, they were Iraqi, she was, they were in Dubai, they had to leave because the visas expired. He went back to his family in Iraq when he was about 17, and they literally hadn't seen each other since. I have two young daughters, and it's painful, it was this really painful. Wassan is just beyond an extraordinary and strong and brilliant woman, has been teaching for my wife at her synagogue preschool for the past three years. And as I drop off my four-and-a-half-year-old every morning for, you know, for the past year or so, Wassan would corner me probably more mornings than not, and you could look in her eyes and she clearly had already cried, and this was at like 8:30 in the morning. And she cried because all she had in life was her son. She's working full-time as an educator at a preschool, she's working full-time at nights and weekends at CVS, and sending as much money to her son who has been in Istanbul for years, and just doing everything she possibly could. She figured out how to get asylum, which is a miracle, she figured out how to get approved for a green card, which is a miracle, she figured out how to get tentatively approved for her son to get reunified, which is truly a miracle, and it was just stuck in a pile of paperwork, and through miracles and klitzba and all sorts of things, we figured this out. And I'll, I won't just, I won't screen share because it's a pain, but I'll just show you this, like this is just a picture of them at Logan Airport, after he'd been interrogated for twice, he was in, he was, it was three hours after he landed, by the time he finally saw mom, and I was freaking out, I was in New Jersey with my in-laws, I was just completely freaking out, I thought I had to get in the car, but they got there, and without any exaggeration whatsoever, reunifying MJ and his mom Wassan is the most significant thing I have ever done in my entire life outside of my immediate family, full stop. I'm just like a 34-year-old guy, like, who underperformed in school, and is just like trying to do okay in life, and if I can figure it out, all of you can figure it out. There are thousands of individuals, of families, and in particular, large families, that are still stuck at Fort Dix, right around the corner from you guys, and at other bases around the country. My incredible teacher, Chris, who's going to speak next, I believe, was at Fort Dix in New Jersey today, and probably saw what I had seen at Fort McCoy a couple of weeks ago, of just despair, just our government doing the best they can, and they deserve credit for doing what they can within a terrible botched situation. But these are folks, human beings, who have been, who've been living like prisoners, really, for two, three, four months, and thank God, they're humans like you. You get to bring hope to families, you get to give homes to families, you get to give stuffed animals in warm beds and tea to young kids. In some cases, you get to reunify families because there are families who, you know, who have a brother who's in Queens or who's in Rockland County or what have you, and you can bring them, you know, to the neighborhood. And so this is the work that we, the Shapiro Foundation, do. We fund, at this point, we've probably funded about 40 organizations across the country to just mobilize local communities to step up and do this work. When UJA connected us to WJCI, it was just an amazing gift for us to be able to facilitate this. We're thrilled to give some dollars that we hope can spur on a bit of a match, because those initial dollars in at your synagogues or other institutions are hard, and I can I can tell from a lot of experience here in Boston, the dollars flow, the dollars are the easy part, right? Thank God, and most corners of Westchester, much like much of the Jewish community in greater Boston, it feels hard on the surface to go raise $15,000, $18,000, $20,000, but once you get going, especially once a real, a topless, like an actual family is involved, like, it's the easiest thing in the world. The hard part is the soft stuff, and that's the meaningful stuff, and that's the stuff that's going to change everybody's life, but your life in particular. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chris, who truly is the teacher nationally on this concept of sponsorship, on welcoming strangers and welcoming them in like family, and an incredible person who's worked for Chris for many years named Dodd, who himself is a displaced person, is a refugee, and who has dedicated this second chapter of his life towards welcoming others in and making sure that he pays forward the incredible welcome that he received. So with that, I'll hand it to my two teachers from New Haven, and huge appreciation for WJCI, and to each of you for having me tonight, and for being here and for raising your hand and for doing this holy work. Every single time my synagogue or any synagogue around greater Boston does this work, many, many, many lives are transformed, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for stepping, stepping into this unknown and doing the same.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you, Shapiro Foundation. Thank you, WJCI. My name is Chris George, and I'm the Director of Integrated Refugee and Immigrant Services. IRIS, we're a refugee resettlement agency based in New Haven, working all across the great state of Connecticut. We're one of about 200 refugee resettlement agencies in the United States, and all of us have been under enormous pressure over the past few months to resettle Afghan evacuees as quickly as we can. I spent the day at Fort Dix today, and it was a cold and at times rainy day, and I asked the guide, where did all these people get winter coats? And now I know, they came in those truckloads from WJCI. So your, your winter coats and accessories are very much appreciated and being used, and they could probably use some more. There are 10,000 Afghans on this base. I've, over the past 30 years, visited a lot of refugee camps, and I have to say, the Fort Dix camp is, has got the best facilities I have ever seen, but it is still a refugee camp, and it is still temporary, and people need to get off those bases, not just Fort Dix, but other bases around the country. Now, I said, we're a refugee resettlement agency, so what does that mean? So, we welcome refugees from all over the world. Our job is to find an apartment, set it up with furniture, stock the kitchen with food, find someone who can cook a hot meal to serve the refugees as soon as they arrive, we meet the family at the airport, we'll put them in that apartment, they'll have a good night's sleep, the next day, we go over the program, hey, we're going to connect you to healthcare, we're going to enroll the kids in school, my staff is going to make sure the adults learn English, we're going to make sure you get a job, and we'll do all this with our staff, maybe with a sprinkling of volunteers, and we have to do this as quickly as possible because we really don't have that much funding from the US government. And this is the way most refugee resettlement agencies in this country work, they do the work with their staff. But there is another way, and in fact, there is a better way, and that is what we call community-based refugee resettlement, or community co-sponsorship. And what that means is, a group of volunteers from a community step forward and say, we want to help, we want to do something, we want to do more than just write a check, although checks are important, we want to do more than, you know, gather used furniture, we want to do more than just the pieces of refugee resettlement, like set up an apartment, or maybe drive people to a medical appointment, or tutor kids after school with their homework. We want to welcome a refugee family to our neighborhood, to our community, and do everything. So, back in 2016, when the Syrian crisis was in the newspapers, and millions of Americans were motivated to do something, people were knocking on our door, in fact, people were knocking down our door of our office in New Haven, saying, we want to help these refugees. So it was in response to this, at that time, unprecedented public outpouring of sympathy and motivation to do something, it was in response to that, that IRIS dusted off an old program of using community groups to resettle refugees, we updated a manual, we developed a training program, we produced some videos, we put together an application, we just laid out the whole process to train a group of volunteers to do this work, and before you know it, there were 50 groups resettling more than 300 Syrian refugees in Connecticut from all across the state. And my point, my argument to all of my counterparts across the country, was if it can happen in Connecticut, it can happen anywhere. I mean, there's nothing unique about the people of Connecticut, there are people across the country who would like to do something, and more and more, there are refugee resettlement agencies that are seeing the light and understanding that this is an excellent way to welcome a refugee family to this country, it is a great way to build public support for refugee resettlement, to engage Americans in this great American tradition, and today, it is the way we can increase our capacity to resettle these Afghan evacuees. I'll tell you honestly, what has happened, we brought 70,000 Afghan evacuees to the United States, and the refugee resettlement agencies told the State Department, look, I'm sorry, we can only resettle about 60,000 of them, there is a gap of about 10,000, there are 10,000 for whom we don't have a resettlement plan for them. So, volunteers to the rescue. So, I have been encouraging refugee resettlement agencies for the past five years to develop these programs, finally, they are, and I don't think the people of this country need much encouragement to get motivated, to step forward, to form groups, and to resettle refugees, they just need a structure to do it with, and that's what we've got now. HIAS is committed to using community-based resettlement along the lines of what we did in Connecticut, Church World Service, there are a number of organizations that are ready to work with community groups, and you might be thinking, I don't know, you know, resettling a refugee family and, you know, doing all of these, 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 these tasks, these resettlement tasks, like, well, just stop and think about it for a minute. Connecting people to healthcare, you all have done that, enrolling kids in school, my gosh, if I ask people to raise their hand, how many times they've enrolled people in school, you know how to do that, helps, help people with their homework, you're experts at that. Teach people English, you all speak English, don't you? Help people find jobs, you've got tons of experience finding jobs and helping people find jobs. These are skills that you have and that you can devote to a refugee resettlement program, welcoming a family and helping them get off to a good start. You talk to people who've been involved in it, and they say it's the best community project they've ever done. You talk to people who've been involved in it, and they'll say, oh my gosh, I learned so much about the refugee crisis, I learned so much about our own country, I learned so much about my community. It is, I think, the best community project in the country, and it is a great way for people to learn about refugees and to develop an appreciation for refugee resettlement, and the only way we can sustain refugee resettlement in this country is to have public support. And to make sure that in the future, no one would dare run for public office by promising to close the refugee resettlement program, that just should never happen. And the next time someone says, oh, you know, do we really want to bring all these refugees to the United States? The resounding answer from the audience will be yes, because we know these people, we've walked the kids to school, we've shown newcomers how to shop, we've helped people get jobs, they're hardworking, tough, motivated, resilient people who will make great neighbors and will make this country great. So, I want to hand the microphone over to a partner organization, HIAS, and I hope we have with us, Ilana Kate from HIAS.
Hi, Chris, thank you so much. I just want to take a moment, really, to echo everything that Chris shared, I think I possibly could not have said it any better, but I'd love to just sort of take a moment to, one, share a very short anecdote, but also talk about the work that HIAS does specifically through our host organization model of engagement. Just personally, my background has been as a healthcare provider and immigrant health policy, you know, specialist, and I joined HIAS as a volunteer three years ago, almost four years ago now, and, you know, through my way, came into a position where I was very closely working with one of our predecessors, and I started this position, and I did not know much about this home program, community sponsorship, and in the last four months that I've been with HIAS, I started, there was three host organizations we were working with that were actively resettling families, and since September, I have onboarded 12 new host organizations and counting, and I, many of them have been in Westchester, the largest voices have been in Westchester, the most enthusiastic people have been in Westchester, and that's, you know, not disparaging anybody else, I just want to comment on how strong the response has been from, you know, our neighbors, you know, I'm in New York City right now, our neighbors in Westchester has been huge, so just being invited to speak with you all tonight is, is, you know, my pleasure for sure, for sure. So I just wanted to talk about the host organization model and gave engagement, it's a collaborative model that utilizes our background, HIAS' background, as a refugee resettlement agency, but also works with volunteer groups called host organizations. So this, again, very similar to what Chris said, there was sort of an outpouring of support in 2017 as a result of the Syrian refugee crisis with a strong focus on Westchester County, and these volunteer groups that sort of came out of this, this host organization, really utilized both HIAS' experience in resettlement and integration work in and around New York, New York City and the greater New York area, to work with volunteers that were deeply engaged, that wanted to share their experiences, that wanted to offer their financial support, their human support to our refugee clients. So this can be a single congregation, this can be a coalition of congregations or organizations or institutions working together, which we call interfaith groups. They would basically be working intensively with a fam, with a family with our support, and knowing that our support would potentially include case management, employment specialist support, me as a volunteer coordinator, and really very involved in the initial training with a host organization. You know, it, we do ask that potential host organizations think about, you know, whether you could commit six months of your time to working with a family, which, you know, many people do benefit from having kind of those long-term relationships, you know, instead of maybe a one-off donation experience, which are, you know, absolutely appreciated and very, very welcome, but I know that many of our volunteers get a very deep connection from that longstanding commitment, you know, and there are different levels of, you know, financial commitments for, you know, an individual versus a family, so it's not that we want people to feel compelled to raise a significant amount of money in a short period of time, although I think as someone said, fundraising never seems to be the, you know, the big issue, you know, and that, we ask sort of that, there's a volunteer group of at least 10 people, which, again, doesn't ever seem to be a significant issue that really wants to support with a family's resettlement, their housing, their health, their education, their employment, and, you know, this is, this is something that's been working really, really well, and I think we've, we've really gotten the process down of, of really connecting with our host organizations and, and being available for questions and really building out the host organization model in recent months to accommodate a huge number of new individuals and families from Afghanistan, and I just want to say, we would not be here at HIAS, I would not be here, I wouldn't be able to do my job as easily if it wasn't for the support we've received from Westchester, so I wanted to pass the mic to Laura Lewis from WJCI, and, you know, thank you all for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Ilana Kate, thank you, everyone. So now that we've heard from all our partners, I'm here to explain WJCI's role in preventing a humanitarian crisis. Simply put, WJCI is here to mobilize and coalesce Westchester's Jewish community to welcome the stranger, and that means you. Whether you're a member of a synagogue, a JCC, or someone who just wants to help, we can provide you with the resources and information and support that you need to become more engaged in working with refugees, and we know that so many of you are ready. As Holly already told you, when we called on you to donate supplies for those living in the Fort Dix Army Base, you responded with extraordinary speed and generosity. The Afghan refugee crisis deserves nothing less, and there is much more to do, and we hope that after tonight's presentations, you'll be inspired to step up. Please go back to your communities, reach out to your friends, clergy, and colleagues, and ask how you can answer this call. WJCI is here to help you do this in both big and small ways. Some communities will want to host a family or individual. Some communities will want to host a family or individual refugee alone. Others will wish to partner with another synagogue, and we're here to help you do this. We've already collected a lot of information on which synagogues are where in this process, and we are ready to play matchmaker and make the connection. We also encourage you to make this an interfaith effort by reaching out to churches and mosques in your community to form an interfaith coalition. What a powerful message that would send to these new future Americans. If you find fundraising presented a challenge, WJCI can help you meet your target with our matching micro grants available in amounts up to $5,000. We are so grateful to UJA and the Shapiro Foundation, because thanks to their generosity, these grants are available to help you provide necessities such as housing, food, and other essentials. Applications will be reviewed on a rolling basis, and should you meet the criteria, we will be able to get back to you fairly quickly. The money will be committed to you once you provide us with the paperwork, letting us know that you've been approved by HIAS or Iris. There's lots more information than I have time to give here. So please visit the micro grant section on WJCI's website. And of course, don't hesitate to reach out to us with your questions at any time, including during this evening's Q and A period. This really is an ongoing crisis. So if you can't be ready tomorrow, next week or next month, don't give up. There will still be refugees that need resettling six months from now. In addition to resettling the thousands of Afghan refugees already in the country on US Army bases, there are thousands more on lily pads all over the world waiting to come to America. Each of them will need help finding their footing to establish safe, secure, meaningful, self-sufficient lives in the United States. WJCI is here to answer your questions and connect you to resources. We maintain a resource bank with information on housing, employment, and volunteer opportunities. If any of this seems like too big a bite for you or your community to chew, you could still help. WJCI can connect you to host groups that need additional volunteers. Our website, wjci.org, and our weekly e-newsletter always have information about which groups need furniture or rights to dental and doctor's appointments, or the many other ways you can be helpful. Thank you. I now pass the mic to WJCI's Marty Michael, who will moderate our Q and A.
Thank you, Laura. Before I get started, I have a couple of small items to say. First of all, we're running late and I would like everyone to know that we will stay longer. If you have questions, we will stay until we all fall asleep. I also thought I would just give you two numbers that are wonderful. There are 135 people on this Zoom. That's an awful lot of help for an awful lot of Afghan families. So proud of all of you, as you could tell, are the speakers. And Chris from Iris mentioned that he was at Fort Dix today. And although there were lots and lots of winter coats that came from WJCI, they still needed more. And Holly has texted that 500 more just went down today from WJCI in trucks. So yay. Okay, the way we're gonna, gonna handle questions, first, I'd like, I will introduce someone who will talk for a few moments. And then if you have questions, please put them in the chat box. We're not going to open this up to 135 people raising their hands. But if you put a question in the chat box, I will be reading that and I will read the questions out loud and send them on to the appropriate person for an answer. First, a question that came to me right away when I first heard him speak was, what is it like a couple of years later, after you've left Afghanistan, been resettled in America? How, how, how did you do and how are you doing now? And to give us a little view into what that is like, I'd like to call on Dodd to come and speak for a few minutes.
Thank you so much, Marty. First of all, I would like to extend my gratitude to WJCI for organizing this extraordinary town hall. It's a great pleasure to be here and it's a great honor to meet such an extraordinary human beings, most of them from Jewish community, who are stepping in and extensively engaging in refugee resettlement efforts in this very humanitarian efforts. Before jumping to respond to your question, I, probably you all know, Afghanistan one time definitely had a large number of Afghan Jewish in that country. For whatever reason, most of them were displaced and the last one was displaced this August, this year. This Jewish community were leaving. They were Afghan. They were leaving in Western, most of them in Western part of Afghanistan and Iraq. A couple of decades ago, they were displaced for whatever reason. In 2017, many decades later, I was displaced as a Muslim. This year, thousands of Afghans, 99% of them are Muslim, were displaced from Afghanistan. So this teaches us and tells us one important message, that displacement by persecution does not discriminate along the line of religious belief.
Dodd, Dodd, you muted yourself. There.
Did I, the whole time I was muted?
No, no. Pick up, pick up where you said, this gives us a lesson that discrimination or persecution does not discriminate on the basis of religion.
Yeah. So persecution and displacement by persecution happen anytime to any community with any faith groups. So with that, I would like to jump to answer your question, Marty. I would like to present my response to your question with two life example. One is myself and the other one is my sister, actually. The reason why I present to this two life example, because of the two models that Iris resettled refugees in Connecticut. So I myself was resettled here by Iris. Staff members who received me at the airport drove me down here to my apartment, which was prepared, furnished, refrigerator was stocked with the grocery, and my culturally hot meal was prepared for me to eat and serve after a very, very, like over 16 hours of life. When you leave your country, you have a lot of anxiety, worries, not only yourself, but your families. When you come to this new country, of course, I'm coming from an underdeveloped country. I would say Afghanistan compared to the US is of course not comparable at all in terms of development. A lot of people think that when we come here, we see beautiful city, a strong, a very developed infrastructure, and we are really, really over the, become over the moon. No. When we come here first time, we are blind by the worries and sadness that, of the left ones that we left behind, our friends, our community, and everything, the whole life that you had spent, you had invested on, you leave them behind. You're blind. You don't see this skyscraper buildings here and this beautiful infrastructure and this nice things here. So that's what you have. And the other big worries that you have when you come here is what you're going to do? You're going to start from zero, from scratch. You built everything back in home and you left it behind. But what you're going to do, what's going to happen to the school of your children? How you can, going to navigate your way into this new society? How you should improve your language to communicate and interact with your surroundings? And all these worries you have. But once you come here, when I came here, actually with my family, step by step, these worries went away. And actually, I felt relieved because first time in the airport, I was received by the people having sign in hand, welcoming me. Once I got to my apartment, it was, everything was ready. After a few days, we were being given a bus orientation with my family, how to ride a bus from one location to other location, to grocery store, to the clinic. Then health team were there to provide us services to go to the doctor. Of course, my child was registered to school by the education team. So as you go along the arrangement and plus by the refugee resettlement agencies like Iris, absolutely in a way that step by step, you're, you're getting relieved from the worries and anxieties that you have about how to build, how to navigate your way in a new society. Absolutely soon after, I arrived here, a couple of months later, I was hired, employed by, with the help of the employment team at Iris as a teacher or tutor in a public school. And after a few weeks, probably, I landed a job with Iris. Not actually, for the first time, I had to apply several times until I was hired there. And since August 2017, I have been working with Iris as a case manager with different departments perhaps. And I should also say that in February 2017, I came to the US on special immigrant visa as a result of working with the US Armed Forces in Afghanistan as a language assistant. And at the meantime, liaison officer for, for over six years, actually. And in this model that I'm just explaining, that now that I'm talking to you, I feel so much at home, and not only in terms of getting along with the community, with my surrounding, and how to interact with the people around me, but also financially, I feel more stable and more confident. Not only I'm working with Iris, but also my wife is working as a tutor and was taken to public school, teaching other Afghans and non-English speakers how to improve their language in school environment. And so my two kids are going to school and pretty much, very much confident. And today that I'm thinking, comparing today to my, the first day that I got here, the worries, I would have, I'm thinking that those worries and anxiety that I had was not right. Because you, you, when you get here, you receive so much hand and support and assistance from the resettlement organization, but also other actors around you, that you don't feel any gap, not very much gap. So that's one example about myself. And I'm really thankful and grateful to the organization like Iris, supporting refugee resettlement here in Connecticut. The second model is my sister, Julie. They came in 2019 with her family on SIV, special immigrant visa. And they were placed with a co-sponsor group and STEM for. They received the same type of support that I receive, actually. But always I'm telling to those families that are placed with the groups, a little bit I'm becoming probably biased against Iris, probably against Iris' case management team. I say at Iris, if Iris is going to resettle you, they have one person handling many, many families. But if you're placed with a group, it is in the contrast. There are many, many people and individuals focusing only on you. So that's what exactly I told to my sister. And actually, they are at STEM for both my sister and her spouse are working full-time, very much stable right now. But one, probably anecdote I have from, from them. So during the resettlement, I think when this virus started breaking out and in this country, one day I went to visit them and I found my sister very, very down that day. I actually tried to scrutinize why, what was the reason? And I found out that one of the group member who was helping them in the resettlement had contracted this virus. Of course, she's feeling good and she's fine. She fought this very well, this virus. But she was so down. I said that, okay, don't worry, sister, her name is Nurya, and she's going to recover. We have to keep her in our prayer. And that's what she completely agreed. But one thing she said that really touched me, she said that since I have come here, this group members in general, but it's particularly her, mentioned her name, that she has been like my, like mom. We have our mother, she's still in Afghanistan. So that really made me think that these groups that they're stepping in, helping this refugee resettlement agencies, refugee resettlement efforts, this is not only meeting their materialistic needs, but also in many cases that nobody speak about, their emotional needs. That was so important to me when I heard that from her. And the other week when I contacted her, I found her so in a high spirit. And that's what she told me, that such and such person from the group member actually has recovered well and she's fine. So it was so important to me to hear that. And, and with that two life example, I would like to give the floor back to Marty and thank you so much.
And thank you so much. There is truly nothing like hearing it, I don't know if you know this expression from the horse's mouth, someone who has experienced it, there's nothing more moving and more important than hearing it from somebody who's been through it. So thank you. I have a few questions in the chat box that I'm going to combine together and give over to Ilana Kate from HIAS. One person has asked about the finances of supporting a family that the Temple Beth Shalom in Woodlands had hosted an Afghan family a few years ago, and the expense of hosting them for the first year was quite extensive. And they're wondering what, if that amount of money, if the, if the financial investment has changed at all. I can say personally, before we turn this over to Ilana Kate, it's expensive to live in Westchester and that may be part of the issue. Another question that we can, I think, put in the same also to HIAS is about the time that it takes, not only the money, but the time that it takes. Once you are ready to be a host group, how long does it take? And although it seems to take long to get someone off of the base and assigned to a host group. So Ilana Kate, you want to talk to those two issues?
Sure. I guess it's the first of my mind now, just because the second question. So in terms of the, when we, let's say, I'll sort of explain the process, when we receive an application that a group or, you know, a coalition of groups wants to become a host organization, you know, we would basically be, review the application as a team, be in contact with the host organization, set up, you know, sort of understand who the point people is, what the structure is. There's a two-hour group training and background checks and driving checks for those that are driving. That could all happen, you know, within a week and a half, 10 days. In general, in terms of matching, once, once a family is fully trained and background, excuse me, once a host organization is fully trained and background checked, we would basically, we could match as, you know, the next day pretty much. And we actually have several times because the need is so high. In Westchester though, as some, you know, maybe some groups in northern Westchester, we've had to sort of think about some of our family needs too. You know, do they want to reset a little, little bit closer to their family members? Even if their family can't provide a lot of support, maybe they, they want to be resettled in Queens. So that's always something we ask host organizations to think about, because that does sort of allow sometimes for families to be resettled a little bit faster or matched with host organizations. You know, once a family is matched with a host organization, we have not received less than seven days notice that they'll be traveling and that they will arrive. I think maybe once, it was like five days, but seven days is the sort of least amount of notice we're given. But we do have situations where a family was matched with a host organizations and it could be like two to four weeks before they actually travel. That's more common, which does allow, you know, host organizations to work on housing. I mean, that's, it can be a big benefit to actually have that extra time. The other question about finances, which is important, I mean, I can't speak to exactly what the congregation, how much they actually spent in a period of, you know, maybe six or 12 months. We request at HIAS, you know, for an individual living in Westchester to really think about, you know, maybe, maybe a range of like $10,000 to $15,000 as a, as a goal for fundraising with a law. With a larger family, this could look like 30,000 to 40,000. Now, thinking about all the needs that a family potentially would have in a community or maybe specific towns that might be a little more expensive to live in in Westchester. There's a couple of things that I think about. I think about the fact that, you know, our families do receive federal grants, per capita federal grants. They also, many of them have been eligible, especially our clients arriving through our Afghan placement and assistance program have been eligible to be enrolled in employment programs, which do have cash assistance connected to them, our matching grant program, our NICE program. This is a more recent development, which, you know, previously was connected with R and P clients. So so there is, there is some additional support, maybe that might not have been there previously. I mean, I can't really speak without specifics. I do think of the fact that some of our host organizations have said that the money that they fundraised that, you know, two things, that it wasn't very difficult to sort of get to those goals, you know, especially get to the 15,000 goal for an individual. But also, a lot of them did find at some point, they might have even had extra funds to dedicate to another family at the end of the, you know, resettlement process. So those are, those are my thoughts about that.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to turn to Chris from Iris right now and talk a little bit about training. I think a lot of people on this call would be interested to learn what they will learn from training before they're handed a family and and a lot to do. Chris, are you there?
Yes, yeah, I'm here. So good question. And in fact, that's a question that a lot of refugee resettlement organizations ask, you know, how can you trust these volunteers? And we say, well, we train them, we train them, and we also provide a lot of oversight. There's a 30-page manual that we expect people to read. There is a three-session, two hours each, total of six-hour training program that we expect the core members of a group to participate in. And that training covers everything from cross-cultural boundary issues to how to go about helping someone find a job, registering people for food stamps and cash assistance. And, you know, everything that our resettlement staff does, we train the volunteers to do. And we also provide ongoing guidance. We don't just say, okay, you can train, here's a family, goodbye. No, this is an ongoing partnership. That's what cosponsorship means. There is a new program that's been launched in this country that does not have as much training or as much of a partnership between the volunteer group and the resettlement agency. It'll probably succeed, but it is not what we're proposing in this, in this, in this town hall. We're talking about a close partnership between a group of volunteers and an experienced refugee resettlement agency. So training is important and then ongoing oversight, troubleshooting, coaching, problem solving after the family has arrived. You can do it. Don't think for a minute that this is something that is out of reach. I'm not saying it's easy. The last thing I would say is that resettling a refugee family is easy. It's not, it's tough, but it's things that you all have done. And we've learned that a group of volunteers, when given a lot of responsibilities, will take it very seriously, do a great job and get a lot out of it.
Thank you. I understand that the hosts are trying to get the chat to be open for everyone for questions. Someone, I'm seeing some questions, but not a lot. I have a feeling some have not come through. So keep posting questions, not comments, and we're trying to get them all through. Someone just just posted that they have a chicken and an egg question. Let's leave this for Chris for the moment. Which comes first, fundraising or getting a new circle vetted and approved?
This might sound like a cop-out. It happens at the same time. You're, you're, you're preparing, you're organizing, you're training and you're raising funds. And and and, you know, they go together. We don't have time if we want to get these families off the bases quickly. And the Department of Defense says they want to shut down all the bases by mid-February. We don't have time to do it the old way, which was spend four, five, six months working with groups, you know, going through long periods of discernment and doing fundraising. No, we've got to move quickly. We have compressed everything to one month and and it can be done. And, you know, you all can fundraise around this. You've got an incredibly compelling story here with these Afghans coming to this country. There is a sense of urgency, winter is setting in. You know, I was, like I said, I was at Fort Dix today. We need to get these people out of these, these tents. Now, they are huge tents, the size of a football field, and they're heated and they're partitioned. But still, they're temporary. We need to get them into communities and connect it to people like you, who, as Dodd pointed out, you're not only their case managers, employment coordinators, job developers, you are their friends. And refugees need friends as much as they need, Dodd, you don't mind if I say this, as much as they need case managers.
Thank you. I actually would like to add to that. Having had some experience in that, it is very true that as soon as you, as as soon as you get involved in this, you become very inspired by what you are doing and what these people have gone through and are determined to achieve. It becomes a very inspiring story very quickly, and it is not that hard to raise money once you're in it. And along those lines, a little provo, WJCI and Hyas and Iris are available to speak to groups, to your congregations or to anybody. If you would like to hear stories and hear details, we'll be happy to come in person if this virus ever lets up or by Zoom if not, and and speak to groups of people. Alana Kate, somebody just asked, where in Westchester and the Bronx are Afghans currently living?
A lot, a lot of places now. I can't, I don't think anyone's in the Bronx. We have a family that's going to be living in Austining, which is not in Westchester, but it's north of that. We have a family Irvington. Sorry, I'm like blanking on everything. Irvington, Hastings. There will be a family in White Plains. I think that's one we have now.
So it's possible. Somebody has also said something kind of interesting. With hotels and office space now being closed during COVID, has there been an outreach to build these building owners to house people during the time that they are closed for business?
Can you, could you say that again? I missed the first.
I don't think hotels are closed now, but maybe some are. But office buildings, many are now closed because of COVID. The staff is working.
Oh, right.
So has anybody approached the owners or landlords of those buildings to see if they would temporarily house people? I haven't heard of any.
I haven't heard of that. I mean, it seems like a really good novel idea, which should be absolutely done. But I can't say personally, I've heard of that. It's a good idea, though.
Yeah, we should look into it. Somebody is asking, is there a step-by-step fact sheet that is available to use when you gather a group together? And I would, I would couple that with when someone comes to speak to a group. Do we, do we have something to hand out that is sort of a step-by-step of, here's how you do it?
I can. Yeah, jump on our website, There is a ton of information, all sorts of lists and guidance, very well-made videos. And I think you'll have everything you need there.
So I had a conversation. Days are coming together, it was either yesterday or today, with a rabbi who has enough money. What he doesn't have is enough volunteers. And somebody is asking, what is the ideal number of people it takes to quote, pull this off for a family of four? Assuming that money is not a, not a problem, let's use this synagogue as an example that has already raised the money. How many volunteers would you say it takes? And what, how many leaders and how many who will do just a couple of things?
I'll just briefly explain the structure that we use. We generally, for a host organization, we interact with one to three kind of point people who definitely have leadership roles. We ask for about 10, eight to 10 volunteers in the entire group, which, you know, with we, we've identified like different committees, like health, education, employment, community connections. You know, to have a head for each committee and you can have volunteers that kind of branch out. We have seen host organizations that have like 30 plus 40 people. You know, obviously encouraging not that many people to be in direct contact with the client, you know, initially, but maybe 10, 10 or so of those people. Yeah, so that's sort of what what we recommend.
Okay, thank you. I can mention two things here. One is a question about which synagogue was I talking about that is looking for volunteers? I will answer you privately, Harriet, and maybe we can put you together. And I'd also just like a shout out to the Bronx. The Riverdale Group is putting together an interfaith coalition with a church and the Hope a mosque and a number of synagogues coming together, dealing with this problem of not any one organization having enough volunteers, but as a Riverdale interfaith coalition, they will have plenty of volunteers. So there is that to look at also. Go ask your neighbors, your, your interfaith neighbors. It's a wonderful opportunity for everybody to learn about each other. Let me read a few more of this. And here's someone who says whoever is organizing Austining, she'd love to be in touch. We will, we will be printing out for ourselves this, all of these chat questions and be back in many with answers for many of you. Lois is asking, and this is a question I actually have asked also, is there any advocacy going on to urge the federal government to coordinate or connect refugees with federally subsidized housing? Go ahead, Alana.
I'll defer to Chris. I think Chris.
Yeah. So it's been a little delicate when it comes to housing. Everybody knows that there is a critical housing shortage, affordable housing shortage in this country. There are, you know, millions of people born in this country, US citizens who are in need of housing. And when the mayor of New Haven, just to give you an example of of how we've dealt with this, stepped forward and said, how can we help? How about housing? And I said, you know, I don't want refugees to move to the front of the line. The last thing I want is for a letter to the editor, the New Haven Register or the Independent to, you know, criticize a refugee agency for moving refugees into housing when there are people born in this country who need housing. So let them, you know, let them join the line, let them wait their turn. But, you know, I, I'm a little uncomfortable saying they should move to the front of the line when there's such a critical shortage of housing in this country. We just want landlords who will accept refugees and accept a cosigner like a synagogue or an Iris or Hyas as sufficient guarantee that the refugee will pay their rent. That's all we're asking for. And believe it or not, there are some landlords who who still do not want to rent to a family that has no credit history, does not right now have a job, doesn't speak English and isn't even here for the landlord to interview. We are asking a lot of landlord, but all of that should be overcome when a Hyas or a synagogue or a church or Iris steps in and said, yes, but we'll cosign the lease. There are still some landlords who don't want to rent. So that's the issue. And eventually, two, three, four, five years after a refugee family has arrived, they, they will get on those lists and they will be eligible for subsidized housing. And they will have waited their turn, which I'm a little more comfortable with.
Thank you. One of my partners at WJCI pointed out, if you fill out our micro grant application, this is not related to what Chris was just talking about, not housing. If you fill out our, our micro grant application, there is a question there about whether you would like to be matched with another group in your area. So you might take a look at that and see if that's another way to form a coalition as far as money goes and perhaps as far as housing goes. I know that the Riverdale Group is looking further south in the Bronx, slightly into Kingsbridge, et cetera, Marble Hill area, because housing is less expensive there, but still close to to Westchester. Let me see, sorry, I have a few new message. Yes, people are asking me questions that. Okay, someone is asking about Long Island that Tali mentioned. There's a collection in process on Long Island. We can answer that separately. Tali will answer you. There is a coat drive going on on Long Island. And yes, those could certainly be brought down to Fort Dix if they still need them. I would like to open this up, if I could now, to the other members of WJCI who are on on this Zoom to see if I've left anything out or if these questions have left anything out that you would like to add. Because right now, I don't have any more questions. Hallie, you want to speak to something or Laura or Amy? Nobody has any questions.
I know I was asking at one point about COVID and the army bases, if that's something anybody could speak to. I think that's of general interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, so partly because they've spent so much time on these bases, they have all been vaccinated, once, twice. Some of them might even be there long enough to get a booster. So in general, it is safe to say that the refugee population in this country has a much higher vaccination rate than any state, even the, the high vaccination rate in Connecticut. So they really are setting an example in terms of COVID vaccination, setting an example for American citizens.
That's great. Yeah, I can say I've, I've done a lot of work on the southern border and the people who cross there are tested immediately for COVID before they're even allowed into any buildings. Once they test negative, they too are vaccinated while they wait to move to their sponsors. So yes, probably that's another population that's more vaccinated than the rest of the United States.
Marty, do you have a question that's come to us from David Everett?
I don't see it. So why don't you read it?
I'll read it.
How quickly is DHS processing the Afghan refugees? Is there currently a backlog of Afghans at Fort Dix who have been cleared for entry into the US? And if so, do you know?
How many?
Once they're cleared for placement with a refugee agency, they are placed very quickly. They want to get them off these bases. So the situation we have now, not just at Dix, but at other bases, is there are thousands of Afghans who wanted to go to Sacramento or places in Virginia or or, you know, other places where there are a lot of Afghans. And the refugee agencies there are just totally maxed out. They're, 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 they can't take anymore. So that's the only game in town. I mean, if a refugee resettlement agency isn't going to receive you, you just have to wait until one has the capacity. Or a group of volunteers steps forward and says, we will take a family. And then that refugee resettlement agency partnered with them, will let their national know, will let the military base know, yes, we can take another family. So they're, they're stuck for a while. They've been waiting and they'll continue to wait until things open up. So they're, they're stuck for a while. They've been waiting, and they'll continue to wait until things open up.
Chris, while we have you speaking to us, the question has been reposted. Are there a great number of pregnant and postpartum women among the new arrivals? What kinds of challenges do they face and support they receive living at Fort Dix?
You know, I don't know what a great number is, but I do know that there, there are naturally quite a few people who, quite, quite a few women who are pregnant. They, they, in some cases, they've been moved off the bases into hotels closer to hospitals. And, yeah, I mean, they face all of the same challenges that any woman who's given birth faces. They need, you know, extra care, extra attention, extra healthcare. And a community group can provide that. A refugee resettlement agency also can, but like Dodd says, they're going to have a case manager who's responsible for 20 other families.
Speaking of Dodd, he's raised his hand. So Dodd, unmute yourself.
I just wanted to add to, Chris covered what the number of refugees, I think it's a response to David's question. He's asking about Afghans have not entered to the United States yet. So yes, we don't know the exact numbers unless Chris knows. We do know there is a huge number of Afghans in Albany. That's the base, and there is another base in Qatar. In UAEA, United.
UAE, someone else has asked that. Will, will Hyatt's take on a family that is in the UAE waiting?
So there are quite a good number of Afghans, but we don't know the exact numbers that in those three or four countries are still waiting to enter the United States.
So does either Chris or, or Alana Kate know what the process is for that? Do they have to wait for the base to empty out before there's room for them to move into it, or can they come directly if there's a, a host group ready to receive them?
Once, once once they have resolved immigration issues and have gone through the security checks, they will be brought to the United States and they'll wait here. Those, you know, Doha, for example, in Qatar, has a capacity of only 2,000. So they want to move people out of Doha. And they'll move them to a military base, and then they'll wait here to be placed with a refugee resettlement agency, or with this new a group that is part of this new initiative, sponsor circles. But they hope, the Department of Defense hopes to get down to just one military base. It'll probably be Fort Dix. It'll most likely remain open beyond the February 15th deadline. And it'll continue to be that base in the United States that receives people from the lily pad sites overseas.
Just to piggyback off of Chris. The U.S. government has been careful not to make any promises beyond the initial 70,000 that are on our eight bases here. The lily pad bases that Chris is referring to overseas have been cleared of all of those individuals that U.S. originally evac'd out. And so the folks that are there now have gotten there through other means, in particular through kind of various NGO efforts, or some other foreign government efforts. There's every reason to believe that anybody who's been evac'd out and who's on, you know, who's known by the U.S. and who's applied for humanitarian parole will get here. But I don't have any sense, and you know, let's say post the end of February, plus or minus, when the, you know, when 95% of those on our, on our eight bases are cleared out. It's not clear to me, or to any of us, you know, or is the U.S. government going to now focus on the more traditional refugees through that, you know, vulnerable refugees that have essentially taken a backseat and haven't come for the past, frankly, five years, six years? Are they going to focus on some of these family reunification cases, some of these other cases? So there are many cases that I'm personally attached to, right, that we're trying to bring over. And in the meantime, recognizing that it, it could be months, it could be a year or two. We have the capacity to help immediately with somebody who's currently at Fort Dix. And we will be able to replenish our, all aspects of our resources when, when we're finally able to get that person onto U.S. soil.
Great. Here's a question I haven't heard before. Are there any unaccompanied minor children admitted on U.S. soil already, either at the Army bases or elsewhere that need care? Holly is shaking her head. Yes, go ahead, Holly.
Been to a few of the Army bases. I know that there are a large amount of unaccompanied minors, but I can't say much more to that. Chris, can you?
There, there are 15, so there, whereas there are about 250 or so, I think, resettlement agencies across the country, Iris being one. There were 15, only 15 agencies, which are resettlement agencies themselves better, that are accredited to do the, the this work. In most, it, it varies by states, but in general, they, they function with the state foster system. And so, so I can speak to Massachusetts. I, I don't know if there's, I honestly don't know if there's a provider in New York State. Ascentry is the provider out of Worcester, Massachusetts. They're able to recruit foster families who end up fostering these kids until 18, and then these kids are actually, young people are able to stay in here until 21. The entire system across the U.S. I think has something like under 200 total spaces. It's an incredibly, incredibly small program. And there've been virtually nobody in it until this moment. So they've been kind of, so thank, thank God it's, you know, it's, it's able to fill capacity. It's not really something that we're all able to, to help with directly. I guess with the one exception of if you're particularly interested in being a foster family, you know, connected with Holly or Marty, and I, and I'm happy to kind of look into figuring out if there's, if it's possible in New York State. I, I honestly don't know.
Thank you. Here's a question from Left Field. What about the, what about the area of Southern California? Are, are there any formed groups in that area? Thank you.
I posted, Holly posted one link, and I posted a separate link. There's a, there's actually like a sister organization of WJCI, Orange County Coalition for something like that. That are wonderful. And Holly posted a wonderful, a partner of ours, also Myrius List, which is a wonderful grassroots organization also. There's some great opportunities there.
And the person who asked that question, please email us and we can hook you up, because the Orange County group is in a grassroots coalition that we are involved in with Hyatt's. So please, please just email us and let us, let us know.
Great. Okay, it's almost nine o'clock. I'd like to just say, and then we'll let Holly close us, close us down. But just remember, info@WJCI.org for any other questions you have or any help you need. That'll get to all of us, and we will get right back to you. Holly?
Thank you. I'm going to close this out. I, I want to add, though, that the questions in the box were amazing, and we want you to use us as a resource. We want you to email us. Some of us work in resettlement, and we have worked in resettlement. We really know a lot about this topic, and we're here as a resource for all of you. It's micro grants, but we're definitely here as a resource. So please know that. And with that, I, we have come to the end of our presentation. And I want to offer my sincere gratitude to our, all of our partners, and for all of you for coming tonight with thoughtful comments. And I want to remind everyone here of the importance of Afghan refugee resettlement. Human lives are on the line. You've been hearing that a lot tonight. And we have the opportunity to help them. And the power of community inspires our passion. Takuna Lum, and WJCI is here to give you the tools and resources I just mentioned needed to do this essential work. So tonight, you've heard about micro grants and the resources. You've heard from us, you've heard from Hyatt and Iris, and what they can provide to help you resettle refugees. And particularly Afghans right now because of the crisis. But you haven't heard the personal stories, although you have heard a few. I have personally been involved in resettling several newly arrived families, mostly Afghan in Westchester over the past few years, and several people I worked with are here tonight. And I've said this to them many times, and I'll, and I'll tell you all this tonight, that the relationship that I've built with the families and with the volunteers have been the most meaningful relationships in my life. And one of the reasons we're doing this is so that you can have that experience too. We want you to have these meaningful experiences that are just like nothing I can describe. They're just amazing. And you, you heard Larry and how he talked about it, and Chris, and it really is true. So, but I want you all to know that whether you decide to resettle a family, there's so many more things that you can do. And actually, someone asked about this in the box, and our newsletter included a section yesterday with social actions and local, local actions. And the local actions are a collection of opportunities that our partners are offering. They need volunteers. They need volunteer drivers to go to take their families to doctor's appointments. They need furniture. They need so many things. They need you to take a refugee shopping, but for halal food or tutor children, but it can be much easier than that. You can just take the kids to the park. You can walk your dog with them. You can take them to the movies. I've taken kids to the movies for the first time. It's incredible experience. Or you can simply click a button and, and buy something off an Amazon wishlist, which we all know is so easy. And any of these things you do are a huge minstah. And we are here to connect you to all of the opportunities, like Laura said, the big and the small. Because every single thing you do changes a life. And so I want you to know, if you're working full-time, or if you're not sure you have time, you do, because this is a priority. You've heard about the situation tonight. And we want you to be a part of it. So that's why we're here. And so from all of us at WJCI, we welcome your participation as mass effort. There are about 135 here tonight, but we had almost 200 people sign up. They'll all get the video. They'll all share it with their communities. I hope you do too. And we want you to know, once again, that you're not going to be doing this work alone. You heard from Iris, you heard from Hyatt's. You heard from our gracious funders, and their sincere respect and appreciation for this work. And we're excited to work with all of them and with you. And if you have further questions, you've seen in the chat box a bunch of times, please email us at info@WJC.org. And as gap, as Afghans say in Dari, and Dodd, you can probably correct me if I say this wrong, although I have it in the Army bases, and I have heard this quite a few times. Tasha Cor, or thank you. And we can't wait to speak to you all again. Give us a shout. Do not be a stranger. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Mia, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Actually, if you're still there, if you want to email us about the furniture, we can give you that information about how to donate furniture. Thank you.
Alana Kate, thank you so much. I think you, are you still on?
Yes, I am still on. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Alana Kate. Wonderful.
It was great to see you all and talk soon.
Yes, for sure.
Bye, take care.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Please, I, I would like to know about donating the furniture. And I would like it to happen as soon as it can, you know, as soon as possible.
You can email us, please, info@WJCI.org.
At WJCinfo.
Info@WJCI.org, and we actually are on top of which families are coming and which groups are resettling them, and we'll reach out to them and see.
Yeah, we have a couple of families.
I have an apartment full.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
We'll do our best.
So you can contact me gladly if you.
Your name is Beverly Fettman? No problem. I'll contact you tomorrow.
You're wonderful. Thank you.
Another Riverdalean, yay.
Marty, yes. Another Riverdalean. Well, I'm very happy.
Hello to the Fetmans.
Thank you, thank you. I, I would be very glad to donate.
Great. That's great.
Thank you so much for your interest and your, your, your willingness to help people. We really appreciate it.
That's what we're here for, right? What is that?
I'm sorry, Beverly, what did you say?
I said, that's what we're here for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for holding this and making all this possible. Great.
We are very grateful for, for you. Thank you.
And we're very grateful for you.
Ditto for me.
Right. Take care. Have a good.
Good night.
Thank you so much. Mara, are you still here from JCC?
I don't see her in the participants. Mara Robert?
Yes.
She may not be there. She, uh.
No, she was probably just, she's here.
Okay.
Let's unmute her. There we go.
I don't, she might not be right there, so I don't know.
Okay.
All right. Good night, everybody.